All right, welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us for the City Council Candidate Forum. We are very excited you joined us because one of the powers you have as a citizen is exercising your right to vote. So we're excited that you are educating yourself before you vote on November 3rd. Ballots will be mailed afterward 14th. The forum today is brought to you by the Grants Pass and Josephine County Chamber of Commerce and the Daily Courier. I am Josie Malloy. I'm the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm going to turn it over to Chris Bristol to introduce the candidates himself.
Hi guys, I'm Chris Bristol. I'm the City Editor of the Daily Courier. Tonight's questions, as Josie said, are going to be recorded and the answers will be recorded. So you can review it on Grants Pass and Josephine County Facebook page or the YouTube channel later on. Tonight, we're going to be interviewing candidates in two contested races. And those races are for Ward 1, for Grants Pass City Council. Ward 1, we have Counselor Clint Scherf and challenger to that, to his seat. There's Clint right there. And Rob Pell, who is challenging him for his seat on the City Council. And we have three candidates for another seat, an open seat. That's Ward 4. That's the seat that's currently held by Barry Eames, but he's not, he's chosen not to run again. And the candidates for his seat are Kami Ray Walter and Vanessa O'Gier and Enrica Brown. So the way this format's going to work, Josie, did you explain? You want to explain again the three minutes and the call and response there?
Yeah, so each candidate will have three minutes for an introduction. Then we'll go into the community questions where they'll each have two minutes to answer. And then each candidate will have three minutes for a closing comment. And we'll be rotating through each candidate as we go through the questions.
And then there's the 15 second thing.
Yes, so I will hold this up when each candidate has 15 seconds left. So you'll, a reminder to close it up and we'll move on.
Okay, Josie, I think you've got the first question today.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and let each candidate start with their introduction.
Oh, that's right, thanks.
So we'll start with Counselor Clint Scherf. If you want to go first for your three minute introduction.
Okay. Good evening, I guess what it is, it's not super dark outside, but it's still the evening time. My name is Clint Scherf. I have been serving on the Town Council for, I believe, about two years now. I actually not elected for the position. I got in on an application process because the mayor switched roles from Town Counselor to Mayor. I actually applied to be from the mayor and didn't get that position, but ended up with a Town Council for Ward 1. I was born and raised here in Grants Pass, born up in Josephine General, which is no longer operational. Once I got out of college, I relocated to Arizona for a little while. Raised my family, built my career and decided to move my family back before my oldest went to college. So I could be a little frugal and save some money on out-of-state tuition. I ended up moving back here. Grew up in the Applegate, Murphy, Applegate area, but I was able to relocate here downtown. Me and my wife own a 1908, or 190, yeah, 1908 Dixon House. So I live in a Victorian house. As you can see behind me, there's lots of wooden wallpaper in my house. I believe so far I've been able to contribute to the council in a positive manner. I bring a lot of experience in the planning. Because that is what my industry revolves around is building houses for people, building buildings for people, as well as navigating city regulations and so forth. So I have a good grasp knowledge on how city regulations and how cities are built out. So kind of that's what I thought I could bring to the table. And I believe I've been able to, you know, give some positive input to the council. And, you know, it is amazing that it's a volunteer position, but there is a lot of hours and a lot of time that's dedicated to making sure that you know what's going on and you are fully educated on every single decision and every single topic that we talk about. So it is amazing that people need to kind of take a step back and realize that we do this on a volunteer basis. And one of the, one of the counselors that actually has a full-time job, I think myself and DJ, we are still in the business world and everybody else on the council so far is, yes, they're retired and they bring a lot to the table. I believe I bring a voice from the people that actually, you know, still maintain a job, got a family, got to put food on the table. And so I kind of want to just keep doing that. It was a great experience, the little time I've spent with the council so far. And in my mind, I believe I've brought a positive input to that and I want to continue to do that. So that would be my spiel, thank you.
Great, thank you. And now we'll move on to Rob Pell.
Okay, I've successfully unmuted my mic, so high fives all around. For 25 years, I've owned and operated a successful downtown business, created at least a dozen jobs annually. My father, my family's financial wellbeing is completely connected with the Grants Pass economy. And we moved our family here 25 years ago from Boston. My oldest daughter was 15 at the time, my youngest was eight. And basically, we wanted to expose them to a place or way of living where money wasn't everything. In the northeast of the country, Boston and New York where I'm from, everybody's either worried about money or they're worried about getting education to make more money. And that seems to be the beginning and end all. And what I found in Grants Pass is everyone who works in the private sector gives up a little bit of financial, gives up financially to live here. For, we trade financial success to some degree for quality of life. And I mean, I made a good living at my downtown business, Sunshine Natural Foods, but the fact is, you know, I have a cousin who was an orthopedic surgeon in Hollywood. He made a million dollars a year. There's no million-dollar-a-year surgeons in Grants Pass. So we all give up a little something here. And I'm very happy with the trade-off, quite frankly. We, I found that kids can get in trouble here, but trouble doesn't usually find them, they have to find it. And that wasn't, that wasn't the case where we're from. So it was a great place to raise a family. And right now, I've got three grandkids in this area and kids who like living here, so I'm looking out for their benefit as well. I'm retirement age, but I still work six days a week. And again, as Clint said, there's just not enough working perspective, I don't believe, on the council. As far as working people, seniors on a modest fixed income, anyone on a tight budget, they all need a voice at City Hall. I believe I can be that voice because I am a member of all three of those groups. So once again, I think that what we really need here on the council, I'm just, I'm independently minded. I'm physically conservative, but very independently minded. And I just don't see a lot of that sensibility on the City Council. I think it's very rare that, you know, we've got to make sure our city officials verify the contracts are completed properly and on time. And we all know with the Public Safety Station and many other projects, we have no idea where or why that money is being spent. I mean, on that gas station purchase, not a single counselor asked at the time that they bought that what the final cost would be to create the striping and the landscaping and the lighting. I mean, we've got plenty of, a engineer, we've got planners, nobody asked. So these questions have to be asked. I believe that, that myself with a couple other good counselors who are asking good questions, we can get a lot, a much bigger picture for the public, how the public's money's being spent, why it's being spent that way. And I think that that's very important. I think a lot of people share that concern. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we'll now move on to Kami Ray Walter.
Hi, too, successfully unmuted. Okay, first of all, I want to start with what he said. I totally agree with Rob about the budget issues, about getting things expedited and more accountability to the citizens. I plan on having my own office downtown for people to come and talk and, and actually interact. Because I, as nervous as I am to be in this forum, I'm known for being the person who will absolutely approach you anywhere, anytime and talk to you. And I think that that is probably one of the greatest skills I'm going to bring to the table. Not only can I talk, but I can also listen. So I was a little nervous, so I made notes. So if you don't mind, I'm going to follow them to stay on track. I'm a 64-year-old mother of two Horatio Alger National Scholars. I did raise them on my own from the time they were six and three years old. My son was a special needs child who's now making a lot more money than mom. And he's only 26 years old, very proud of them. They both graduated with honors from college. And I raised them as a low-income parent. I know affordable housing, I know homelessness, I've lived through it. And I understand what it's like to live on a low income. I actually decided to choose it as a way of life. And it's not that bad, actually. But it brings me to mind that budgeting and managing money is a very creative art. And on a city council, it requires a lot of compromise and willingness to be able to listen to people with totally opposite positions. And that is probably one of my biggest strengths is because I'll talk to anybody, I'll listen to anybody. And as I'm out campaigning right now, I'm meeting people with completely polar opposite opinions from my own. And yet, I'm able to build bridges with them, talking about the issues that are facing Grants Pass. I listed myself as a nonpartisan because this is a nonpartisan race. This is about city service, public service. I really understand what Councilman Scherf was talking about. I actually happen to have the endorsement of Councilman Eames, who is my backyard neighbor. And when I ran two years ago, he started mentoring me in, you know, being prepared for City Council. And okay, guys, I brought a prop. I actually graduated from the City of Chattanooga Neighborhood Leadership Institute. That's my ex-husband's last name. And I learned and was trained in the City of Chattanooga how to become a councilperson. But honestly, you guys, I'm a West Coast girl. I couldn't live in the South anymore. So I decided to come back to the West Coast and I became inadvertently homeless, which we're facing right now. We have a lot of people who are inadvertently homeless. And I lived that way in my camper truck in San Diego for almost 22 months until I realized I couldn't do it anymore. Came up to Klamath to meet with my kids, didn't like Klamath. Came here for 4th of July and my friends hired me in their adult foster home and I've been here ever since. It was 17 months into my stay here. Did you hold up the sign?
Yeah, you guys are, you guys both held up your signs at the same time. You blocked each other out.
That's when you got to interrupt me. Anyways, I've been here, I ran, I, to play second the last time I ran. And I'm running again because this is like my purpose, it's my mission. I'm here to help.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. And now we're going to move to Vanessa O'Gier.
Hey, everybody, my name is Vanessa O'Gier. As you can see behind me, that's spelled O-G-I-E-R. And I'm a candidate for a City Council in the November 3rd election. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to the Grants Pass and Josephine County Chamber of Commerce and the Daily Courier for giving me this opportunity tonight. To tell you a little bit about myself, I have lived in Josephine County for 19 years. And I had the pleasure of growing up in Merlin. Into my early adolescence, I lived in a single-parent household and I watched my mom juggle a minimum of two jobs for many years. I attended North Valley High School and I earned my diploma from Oregon Connections Academy. I finished out my last year of high school online in order to get a job to help my mom with her financial needs. After graduating, I attended RCC Redwood Campus and Cornell University, receiving my certificate in Nutritional Studies. For a majority of my full-time college attendance, I did work two part-time jobs. One of those jobs was in the financial sector and it grew into the next six and a half years of my life. As the years went by, I realized that this was not the correct path for me. And I decided to move my career out of the private sector and into the public sector, where I now work as a dispatcher for the Oregon State Police. I closely understand what it means to live on a tight budget. My husband and I have navigated being a one-income household. For years, I have been a caregiver for my grandmother. So I am very familiar with the challenges of unpaid family elder care. These are the experiences that I plan to carry with me while legislating for the City of Grants Pass. Now, so this leads me to why I would like to run for this position. After doing hours of research and following City Council meetings and workshops, I know I am qualified to legislate and lead the community. Being a City Counselor is so much more than just attending workshops and meetings. I do recognize that being an effective counselor means to conduct public outreach, to complete hours of research, prepare agenda items to introduce, utilize critical thinking skills, and most importantly, to listen to those who you represent. These are all qualities that I possess and I will begin using on day one. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And we will move to the last candidate, Reka Brown.
Hello, I'm Reka Brown. And I'm running for City Council because I want everyone to be able to water the yards and I want everybody to pay the same charge for sewer with no unit rate on sewer, minimal unit rates on water and pay for the overhead in our base rate like we used to back in the 80s when water was cheap and everyone watered their yards and this town was beautiful and safe. We didn't have wildfires coming up to the doorstep of our town. We didn't have them within 40 miles. But the city went and started doing a water-saving rate system. Like it's spread pretty much all over the country and around the world. And are giving a cheap, giving us cheap access to the water with a low base rate and then making us pay for the nose to use it. And this does not work for the finances of the city or the citizens. The city is constantly chasing the overhead, which they have to sell water to pay the overhead under their rate system and they're trying to make us save water. It makes no sense and it's causing the city to raise our rates four and a half times the rate of inflation every year, compounded. Now, this isn't my only issue, but it is the one that got me to run for a no-pay job. I've been attending City Council meetings for about 15 years and county commissioner meetings too for much of that time, watching workshops occasionally and learning how local governments work. Never really bothered with local governments before I came to Grants Pass 20 years ago. But it is where the action is, a lot of items, especially water. And I'm a gardener. This is what really brought me to thinking about the price of water. When I have customers who ask me to not, ask me to not water all their yard or said they weren't watering all their yard because they couldn't afford the water. And you know, that's a really sad thing. When people retire and think they're going to, you know, have a nice yard and a garden and they find that they can't afford it. They can't keep their yard as nice as they'd like it to be because of the price of water to use it, not to just have it. Now, I hope you'll vote for me on this issue and for other issues like starting a, some hostels to take care of our homeless population.
All right, thank you so much. And your connection is cutting out just a little bit, just so you know. I'm having a little bit of feedback from you. All right, we're going to move now into the questions. And just as a reminder, each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. And the first question we have, and this time we will start with Rob Pell because we'll be rotating through. The question is, as a City Counselor, what are your primary roles? And we'll start with you, Rob. Looks like you're still muted.
Hey, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, the question again?
The question is, as a City Counselor, what are your primary roles?
I believe the primary role of a City Counselor is to represent the people, 36,000 people, and give the, specifically the City Manager direction, create policy and priorities based on what comes in front of you, but also what the council decides and goes out and decides is most important. Not just discussing what the staff brings to them, but bringing to the council chambers what the people and what your experience tells you is important. And by discussing that with the other counselors, if you can then come to a consensus, you can then give the City Manager and the staff direction as to what information you need to make good decisions and create future, future action. In addition, I feel, and I feel very strong about this because, you know, I was on the council before and I, I really got to see up close what, what worked and what didn't work. But I feel that it's very, very important. Even if it, even at the risk of me looking dense, it's very important that counselors ask the City Manager questions. They ask multiple times, if that's what's required, to get honest, transparent answers that can be proven. And I know that every counselor I've spoken with, and I've spoken to all of them, they all say the first year or two, they're embarrassed or they're shy or they're this, they're intimidated by the, by the spotlight or the position. They, I really believe a counselor cannot, the only, the only dumb question is one you don't ask and it gets dumber if you don't get the answer. So you really need to ask that question. And again, the City Manager is your only employee. So he's the one the questions have to be directed to. But you, we need as counselors to get questions answered. We need to listen to the public and to other counselors to set direction. And through discussion, we set policy and we move forward.
Great, thank you. And now we'll move on to Kami Ray Walter.
Can I say what he said again? I totally agree with what Rob shared. And there's a couple other things I'd like to add. I feel that in addition to the number one responsibility, being responding to your constituents, being open to dialogue with people, no matter where they're coming from and listening to what they want. And like Rob said, bringing that to the table. We have to make accessibility and again transparency very high on our list of priorities. I also think that having a passion for what you're doing is important. I've been told it's not an easy job. And I have an extensive education. I was almost a professional college student at one point. And so I understand what it means to actually get out there and have to study and grind and understand and provide not only intelligent discourse, but provocative sometimes discourse on the topics. I'm not afraid to stand up and for a position that I feel strongly for, but at the same time, I believe that part of the art of compromise is being willing to bend and not have to always be right. So to create a cohesive body to me is really an important responsibility we will have as council members because in order to represent our city properly and by extension, our counties, since we are the county seat, we have to be the model of proper behavior. And I hope that, you know, we don't see bad behavior on the streets like we have in a recent case. And so I, I feel like in addition to everything that Rob said, bringing passion, but also the willingness to learn and listen and build bridges is number one.
Great, thank you. And then we'll move on to Vanessa O'Gier.
I think the role of a City Council and as a counselor, number one is providing strong leadership. Making sure that you show up for your community and speaking on behalf of their needs is number one. I think number two would be analyzing the issues that your community faces and working diligently towards creating solutions for them by working closely with stakeholders, by working with small businesses, by working with the unhoused, by working with nonprofits and really creating coalitions in that way for a more effective solution-creating process. Ensuring transparency with all decision-making. I understand that executive sessions exist and they are necessary, but they should be extremely limited. And all, all decisions, especially for large capital projects, should be well-known by all because that is the responsibility of the city. And lastly, I think utilizing the city's budget on a priority needs basis is extremely important. As a government, as a current government employee, this is something that I have a lot of experience with. And ensuring that basic needs are met for the community and frivolous projects are always secondary.
Great, thank you. And we'll move into Reka Brown. It is your turn.
There I go. Thank you, I might have been too loud earlier. I'll try and keep it down a bit. And I believe the main job of the City Counselor is to set policy and legislate and keep track of what the, the staff are doing and, and attend meetings with committees, read all the stuff that they give you to read twice. I figured out lately I need to read stuff twice to really make sure I get everything. And try and make this city a better place and have some ideas for doing so. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. And now Counselor Clint Scherf.
Very good. Can you repeat the question one time, just to refresh the exact quotations?
Yeah, absolutely. As a City Counselor, what are your primary roles?
Primary roles? So basically, what I feel is a counselor is a representative of his constituents, representative of the citizens of the, of the city. When you break it down to the nuts and bolts, you work for the taxpayers that actually pay taxes. I think we need to, I think a lot of government digresses or actually expands their roles a little bit too far. And I believe your role as a government official appointed by the citizens, appointed by the taxpayers, is actually to manage that money, that taxpayer's money, because everybody needs to realize that the government doesn't make money, they actually spend your money. So I believe an efficient role of a counselor would be to try to provide opportunities for its citizens in aspects of providing business growth, provide avenues for people to succeed in their life and basically allocate their taxpayers' money in efficient manners or, you know, in efficient ways that we're not wasting it. Yes, we need to have budget controls. But I think realistically, as a counselor, you need to basically be able to look at each situation that you're dealing with before you make a decision and look at it from every single angle you possibly can. I do notice that there are people in governments specifically in our government, that seem to have, you know, agendas. They come to the table with agendas and they kind of put blinders on. If you're not looking at a problem or a situation from every single possible angle you can, you're going to miss a solution. There is six different solutions to every problem, if not more. So I believe coming to the table with, you know, you know, an open mind. I guess to bring it down to it, I believe that the councillor should be, a council position should be responsible to, to help allocate taxpayers' money to provide opportunity for its citizens. With every problem that is in front of them, they should be able to look at it from every single angle possible to come up with more than one, if not a plethora of solutions for it.
All right, guys, can you hear me? All right, that last question was fairly philosophical in nature. This one's a lot more specific. And the, the city has said that it's looking at a budget shortfall next year of over a million dollars. The council is asking voters to approve a, an increase in the public safety levy, which is expiring next year. They want to raise it by ten cents. That's not going to come close to covering that shortfall. As if I, I think that, as readers of the Daily Courier know, it's going to still leave a hole of like, somewhere between five to eight hundred thousand dollars, five hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars. So the question for the candidates today, starting with Kami, is how do you propose the city's budget shortfall be rectified? Even if the public safety levy passes, there will be thousands of dollars to make up by ways of fees or budget cuts. You're up.
Lucky me. This is not one of those fun questions, Chris. It's actually one that, when I'm out talking to people, it's the major complaint I hear, is what the heck is going on with the way the money is being spent? Where's the money going to come from? So I've gone to my councilman over the fence. And I've talked to him and I've said, okay, Barry, what's going on? From my understanding, now, now, mind you, I'm not a council person right now. So if anybody's read the book Cast by Isabel Wilkerson, she talks about how when you buy an old house, it comes with problems. So when you come onto the city council in the middle of a problem, you're, it's like buying an old house. You've got things to fix. And one thing I have heard is that the escrow with Travis Burisma on the, that River Reserve property is being worked on and that that will bring money into the city coffers. Now, the fact that there was an awkward three hundred thousand dollar oversight on the, the public safety building, that was very bothersome. I, I think that the council might need to pay closer attention to the accounting. But again, this is something I haven't personally been involved in. My suggestion, though, is to, I was just reading today in your paper about all these access properties or extra properties that are available. And the city, Aaron Cubic spoke of, you know, there's at least seven unattached properties at this time. There's ways to raise money. But how we manage it from this moment on is how we fix the house. So I come in knowing how to pinch those pennies and I plan on doing everything I can to support a really strict budget.
Okay, thanks, Kami. Vanessa, you're up next.
Thank you. So we have this really large budget shortfall discussion in front of us, which is very important, but I think we need to address how we got here. We can point to some tangible pieces of evidence of frivolous purchases that the city did. I think the best example is the old Chevron station. This was a purchase amounting to about four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to this date. That was pulled from the general fund. And that's where our public safety services are also pulled from, is from the general fund. So when we are spending money frivolously on, on things that the city does not need, that are pet projects, and then later asking the voters, you know, or asking the city council and the public as a whole as to where we should be cutting from essential services is absolutely unacceptable. It is also unacceptable that the budget shortfall began as a nine hundred thousand dollar figure and it has now developed to just over one million with two full-time, new full-time employees for the Parks Division slipped in. I don't think that that is a sound decision at this time. So I think that those two new full-time positions for Parks need to be eliminated from the discussion to further save money. Now that we have gotten that out of the way, how we address the shortfall? Just like my opponent had said, I think it is, it's smart for the city council to heed the advice of that advisory committee to start looking at our surplus properties. And not only the properties that we can sell, but if there's any properties that can be leased. It's also important that we look to the property management division and in ways that we can save money for the taxpayers with the maintenance of our critical city infrastructure. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Vanessa. Rika, I think you're next.
Yes, thank you. You know, the purchase of properties that have already been bought, although it's an interesting discussion to, that whether we should have bought them or not, is water under the bridge. We need to look at the current expenses that we're paying and take, really look at who needs, you know, which ones we need. For instance, on the water treatment plant and the sewage plant, we have a rate consultant who's paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to set up our water-saving rate system. Now, I can see why the staff didn't want to handle this. It's kind of difficult to set up a rate system that doesn't make sense to, that keeps going higher and higher and higher just to pay the bills to sell water and say, no, please, don't use it. We need water in this city and we don't need a rate consultant to sell it. We need, a regular bookkeeper could set up a rate system that made sense. The one that we had back in the eighties, when I lived here for two years, and water was cheap and yards were beautiful. That's just one little example of money that can be saved. Get to looking, I could probably find more. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rika. Clint, I think you're next.
I keep pushing the wrong button, sorry. Okay, so I'm unmuted now. And that is sometimes a technical challenge, sorry about that. So basically, we, the council currently is discussing the shortfall from the public safety aspects. The levy is a first step in a positive direction. From what I was educated on, and basically, I don't have a full history of how everything came out. I've only been serving on the council for a, a short period of time. So basically, what I am educated on is what I'm downloaded from city staff and presentations that we get and all the information that we can read and gather. The shortfall has come from the fact of, you know, we can go down the rabbit hole and figure out where the, where the result is. I have a little bit of knowledge on that, but I don't have enough to pontificate. So realistically, the levy has not been raised in Grants Pass for a number of years. Population has grown. The infrastructure has grown. So basically, what you're doing is you have a levy that hasn't grown with the, with the growth of the actual city. So I think it is due time for a levy to be increased. The increase was, was beat up from start to finish and we came to a very decent compromise with the same aspect as all council members were trying to chew on budget cuts that they possibly could to actually balance everything out in the end. And if anybody watched some of the, some of the workshops and everything, I gave up one thing that my wife was going to kill me for is, I actually said that we could, you know, decrease some money by not having hanging pots supported by the city. It's a beautiful thing and it's a beautiful aspect for our city, but there's other ways to actually fund that. There's a lot of small projects that we have that we can cut here and there. We've gone through the major departments and a lot of the major departments have gone through and done their own budget cutting to get more realistic numbers. As well as the city staff has done a number of aspects within their budget to actually free up some, some money in the future. Meaning that, you know, maybe they might not get the, the raise that they're supposed to in the, in the near future. But it's, it's a challenge. I think it's one of the biggest things as a council member that you will actually come across is trying to balance every single thing that's out there to figure out what you can manage to cut without having the butterfly effect happen and the dominoes fall. And by the end of it, you realize that, you know, you're missing one police officer. I can, I could pretty much speak for almost most all council members right now that we, as a council body, are in full support of our police and will do what needs to be done to get this budget shortfall done.
Cool, thanks, Clint. Rob, you, I think you've got the last word on this one.
Thanks, Chris. First, I need to say that I think that that concept that the levy hasn't gone up in ten years, it's just a red herring. I mean, while I do support the, the dollar eighty-nine, the fact is that our, our property values, our assessed values have gone up three percent a year for the last ten years. The amount that the levy is bringing in, you know, The Courier did an article on that. Lauren Bristol did a, I mean, Lauren, Lauren, we'll leave it at that, did a, an article on that. The levies bring in forty or fifty percent more now than it did ten years ago. And that's without an increase because of our increase in assessed values. So that needs to be considered. You know, every year, our, our taxes, our, our tax base goes up. Levy, dollar amount staying the same, we still end up more in the city coffers because of our tax base going up. But first, I would, I would say beyond that, it's very important all councillors need to attend the budget meetings. I mean, we had one councillor this year who missed all four budget committee meetings. I mean, we're not, the councillors are not accountants. We are not professional financial people. We need to go to the budget meetings. Clint missed three out of the four meetings. So, you know, I haven't even looked at the budget book this year. I'm sure next year, if I'm on the council, I will. And I will attend the budget meetings, which is going to help. But really, you know, if your bucket has holes in it, the first thing you have to do is patch the bucket before you add more water. The city staff needs to be held accountable for providing counsel with accurate information so there's fewer multimillion-dollar surprises. I mean, after we, after the budget officer, the city manager, said that we had a million and a half dollar excess funds, excess unbudgeted funds, after that, a year and a half later, we found out we had a shortfall. So right now, the, the, I don't think we can consider giving away any of those properties, like the council actually was considering. I think we need to get maximum value for those excess properties. We can't give them away because we need the money first. Next year, if we have excess money, we can then give to charities potentially. But right now, we need to maximize the value that we have.
Thanks, Rob. I think it's back to you now, Josie.
Yep, so we're going to move on to our next question and this time we'll be starting with Vanessa. The question is, what is your assessment of the level of trust citizens have with city government? What would you do to either maintain or improve the level of trust? Right, and we'll get off to Vanessa.
Thank you. After talking to many city residents, one thing has become really clear that they don't feel like their opinions and values are represented at this time by the city council. So when people don't feel represented, they often retract from involvement. And this is something that I would like to change. I believe that we need to rethink the way that the city council represents our community because our local government is one of the best ways that we can affect positive change in our everyday lives. Here are some ideas that I would like to utilize to increase transparency with the city council. The first and one of the most important is to eliminate thumbs-up votes. I believe that all votes should be tallied and recorded by the city recorder. These votes should be documented and made publicly available. It is not adequate to ever conduct a thumbs-up vote on any city business. There are times when the council has conducted a thumbs-up vote and if the councillor is not in the lens of the recorded meeting, you simply do not know how your councillor or that councillor voted. I believe that every city council workshop should have more detailed minutes than they already are. The minutes are currently pretty bare bones. We do have the Urban Area Planning Commission that actually has a detailed transcript. Utilizing something like that for our city council meetings would be extremely beneficial for the public. Like I said previously, for a once-in-a-generation project, it is of the utmost importance that the city ensures that the public is informed on these projects. So creating a roadmap and putting this online on the city's website would help open that transparency. All votes for committee members need to be documented and kept on those detailed minutes. As of right now, that process is done on a secret ballot and eliminated with zero accountability.
Great, thank you. And we'll move to Rika. Oh, you're muted right now.
There. I actually, I think I muted myself right then because I had forgotten to unmute after my last. But it's so quiet in here, you can't tell. I have to agree with Vanessa on the lack of transparency in our votes and, you know, city council votes and such and minutes. And add that we also have, the council is also, at least the mayor, has really cut back on the ability of the public to comment in, in the public comment section. Because they want people to be there, at least ten minutes before the meeting, to hand in a card to ask permission to speak during that session, which we didn't have, used to have to do. And then they moved it toward the end of the meeting. Now, when I started going to these meetings, that's where it was, at the end of the meeting. I learned an awful lot sitting through those meetings, waiting for public comment. But I've found, walking around this city, petitioning on the water rate reforms that I have given to the council, that the citizens do not feel represented. They don't, they, and they are really rather disgusted with our city government in many ways. And perhaps I might help with that, perhaps not. It's really hard to please everybody. But I can do my best. Thank you.
All right, great. And now we'll turn it over to Clint.
Awesome. Um, I, I don't know, I kind of feel, since I'm already kind of serve under the council, I kind of feel more obligated to answer questions that, that, that people are bringing up here in this discussion. You know, you bring up the discussion that you think that the council could be more transparent by having handwritten transcripts. Every single workshop, every single meeting is video-recorded and on, posted online for people to watch live, as well as after the fact. And you kind of commented about thumbs-up votes. There is no such thing as a thumbs-up vote. Workshops are a download session for information and sometimes the staff needs some direction to go forward. And the thumbs-up is actually just a consensus on directing staff to do something for a future. It's not actually an official vote, which official votes are actually done in a public meeting in the workshops. Oh, sorry, I just kind of felt that needed to kind of be addressed there. I feel that, that so far, I think we've been fairly transparent in, in, in everything that we're doing so far. There are people complaining about executive sessions. Executive sessions are, are, are held in private so the, the council can meet with its, its own council and, and discuss certain things. and discuss uh, certain things of uh, important matters such as uh, land transactions and so forth, uh, which are negotiation tactics, basically you wouldn't wanna negotiate in public with somebody, it kinda defeats the purpose, so. Um, I, I think with the, with that and that the public comments, uh, we, we did, we did have some uh, change in public comment because we were seeing that uh, that our town council meetings were dragging on and people that were actually trying to address a business that had to be seen in the council, um, a public meeting would, would be delayed out a few hours and uh, it wasn't necessarily fair for them to conduct their business at the end, so we kinda switched things up and, and then we saw, you know, I personally felt uh, there was some abuse that was happening with our uh, public comment and so I was in favor of actually changing some of the rules, so. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll yield back, thank you.
Alright, thank you, and Rob, you are up next.
Thank you, and I have to say at this point, I have to agree 100% with everything that Vanessa said, and quite frankly, um, I think that Clint is trying to defend the indefensible. Um, as a member of the public, watching you Clint and the whole body, I can tell you that it does not inspire trust and we do not feel that it's transparent. Uh, Monday's meeting, there was no video uh, broadcast, it was only audio, we had no idea uh, whose thumb went up for what, there was no possible way. And if you've ever tried to research anything like I have, written transcripts are, they take one tenth the time than sometimes having to go through a half an hour or an hour of a video. So the transparency is not there, quite frankly. Um, I'm a customer of, we'll say, the city councils, I'm in a position to say that. You from the dais, I don't believe are in a position to really know that perspective. So I agree with everything Vanessa said. Um, you know, I have probably over a thousand customers a week come in my store and I interact with many of them. So I have a very good sense of how the public feels and why the public uh, does not trust our government. And I can tell you that there are times when the, when the public wants to see some consequence of some of these mistakes, whether it's a 50% over budget on the police headquarters that we never really got a good explanation for, and by the way, they're not done spending money on that police headquarters, as of last week, they still had more trouble in that building, which Clint may, the council may not even know about yet. But I think that the public wants to see uh, some repercussions, they wanna see responsibility taken. Um, I also feel that it's very important that the public gets to see the meetings. I also think that the public needs to speak at the meetings, the whole idea of filling out a card 10 minutes before and then waiting for hours, and I've waited for hours to speak at a meeting, but there's no reason to have to be there 10 minutes early to do it. So there's so many, so many things that can be done to increase uh, citizen participation and make citizens feel like they are actually valued and the public, and the, and the council wants to hear from them. That's someone who right now is a member of the, the uh, public, and I can tell you as a user, uh, we'll say a, a, a customer, it doesn't feel that way to me right now. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, and Kami, it's your turn now.
Clicked on my picture and not unmute. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say to Vanessa that um, I don't feel like I'm your opponent. I feel like we are so on the same page that we are co-candidates along with Raka, Reka. I thought her name was Reka, sorry. Um, but at, I'm really proud that we are in an unprecedented three-way race amongst females because I literally have passed out 500 business cards with my little position on them and have spoken to every single person I've passed a card out to, I never dropped one on somebody's door. And every single person I've spoken to so far has not been happy with the city council. And it, it goes way beyond um, just some of the procedural aspects, it's a, a sense of confidence is, is missing. They don't feel like the city council really has a hand on the pulse of their personal lives. And I went um, before the city council myself, um, the very first meeting in January of 2019 and proposed a committee on homelessness and um, affordable housing, had to be formed, that it was a crucial issue. And at that time, the city council just kinda gave me the, okay, whatever, and I've continued to work with this issue and um, actually personally carry around drinks of water, I mean bottles of water to give to homeless people, but I'm trying to find out what can we do to help these people. And the city is now engaged in a big long uh, appeal of a lawsuit that's being seen all over the country. We don't need to be embroiled in lawsuits, we need to be solving problems. And I hope no matter what the outcome of this race is, that all three, four, five candidates can, uh, winners and losers can get together and work on these problems because that's what our citizens need. And I'm hoping to have some sort of forum set up and a office in downtown where people can come and just drop in and talk if they need to. But that to me is the most essential thing, is making people feel like they're being listened to and then applying that to our policy.
Okay, thank you Kami, we're gonna switch gears a little bit, uh, I've got a new question for you. Rika, you're gonna be going first on this one. And the question is, um, oh boy, wait a second. Uh, how do you plan on helping keep businesses thriving while we continue to deal with challenges of regulation due to COVID-19? And specific examples uh, would be appreciated. Again, Rika, you're first.
I uh, really like what the council has done so far, is uh, helping the restaurants with their uh, parking, uh, seating areas, parklets, that's what it's called. And grants for businesses that didn't get grants, you know, or uh, help from the state or the feds and just, you know, there, there's not, only so much they can do as far as that goes, but we really do need to start thinking about building places for the least of us, the ones, the, the, not the least of us, but those who are in the worst cases. The people who don't have the money to rent or they can't find a place to rent or, you know, everyone who's out there because, and doesn't have shelter in this town, and it's a good thousand people. We need to think big, not small. But this is regardless of COVID, and COVID has only made it worse like it has everything else.
Alright, is that it Rika? Okay, thank you. Hey, your, your audio was uh, having a little trouble again that time, the last couple of times you were good, but this last one was a little hard to hear. Um, Clint, you're next, and the question again is COVID-19 and uh, economic restrictions, what the city can do to help?
Um, so as everybody knows, uh, we, we did uh, offer a assistance program for uh, businesses, um, we allocated some money to release to um, some of the local businesses um, ahead of the federal funds that came through. Um, we've extended that, uh, the, it seems kinda funny because the COVID money that's coming from the federal level is very, very, very slow to get to these rural areas such as us. Um, so I know that staff, uh, as well as council is approving every single penny to go out to the um, the local businesses as soon as it comes in the door. Um, the Parklets program where we extended the footprint of, the actual footprint of the restaurants out into the street, granted, yes, we do take away a few parking spots, but those actual businesses that those parking is right in front of, they actually have to apply for it, so they have to agree that they're gonna lose some parking spots to get that. That program, I, I think has been very successful and if you see local news, um, other cities surrounding us have actually gone and, and implemented the same programs. Um, I think as this does carry on, I would like to focus, uh, you know, i- if elected again, I would like to focus on getting the city pushing stronger economic development, reaching out across the United States, across wherever, trying to get some businesses to come into this area. I think right now we utilize SoReady, which is, which is a, a, more of a countywide uh, facility for our economic um, development. I think we're at the precipice where we have the growth and the population where we might be able to start taking that in-house and starting, you know, a department for our own and uh, pushing our own agenda for, for growth. I think promoting anything and everything we can to help businesses stay alive and grow and expand um, is, is, is uh, you're kinda, kinda at the top of the list. Right now, we, we allocate a lot of federal money that's uh, block grants that have been sitting in our coffers for a while and we have been um, getting that out to the local businesses for expansion, for business retention, for dressing up the front of their buildings. Um, there's a matching uh, grants that we have available and um, Susan Seerider's been uh, uh, at the front end of that and she is promoting that to all downtown businesses and all businesses. Um, so I think what the city's doing, continuing to doing and, and basically opening up more um, opportunities, I think would be, would, would be key.
Okay, thank you Clint. Rob, uh, the, the city in, in COVID-19?
Well, I think that um, uh, because we've got, there's such a challenge with people going to brick and mortar businesses now, uh, Amazon's booming, and I think that we need to remove any possible obstacle, we as a city, any obstacles that prevent uh, customers from getting to our brick and mortars. Um, that means increased parking, that means better traffic flow, things of that nature because we can't give customers any reasons to not come downtown and shop or not to go to any one of their favorite businesses and shop. I think what the city could do more, I mean, some of what the city's done is, is fine and it's, it's reasonable, uh, however, it's kind of a one-time thing, there's only so much money the city can give out. I think um, we can do a lot better with education of the advantages of shopping locally. Um, you know, when we shop at locally owned businesses, uh, my understanding is 68% of that money stays in our local economy. It goes to our employees who then spend it at other businesses, it goes to local suppliers, uh, it goes to local landlords, but you know, when we shop at non-locally owned businesses, um, 57% of that money leaves the area, goodbye, for, it leaves it for good, it's gone, we're never gonna see it again. So I think with the uh, I would actually put it back a little bit, sorry Chris, on the Courier, uh, you guys could do an article on the advantages because they're, they're, you could rea- you could do a doctoral thesis on it quite frankly, on educating the public as to all the advantages of shopping locally, uh, while the city still has their, their newsletter, they could do the same. Because I think many, many customers just don't really understand or appreciate um, how important shopping locally can be. I mean, we've got some suppliers whose business is down over 90% this year due to COVID and we go out of our way to shop locally at my store, we try to source when we can, and I think that the city and the Courier can do a really good job educating people as to the advantages of shopping locally. That will help us and it'll be a long-term strategy that is sustainable.
Alright, thanks Rob. Kami, you're up.
I um, just spent most of the day talking about uh, business recovery under COVID because I'm working on G Street at Blondie's Restaurant and so many businesses on G Street are struggling and G Street is sort of the heartbeat of Grants Pass downtown. And um, the other night I decided to just take a walk around downtown and see what it looked like and I was so surprised at how many businesses had signs that said, "By Appointment Only" and um, come back, you know, at these very brief hours. And we were talking strategy all day about how can we generate more business. Blondie's has, has done the extension out into the parking lot, she's done a beautiful job with setting up outdoor seating, but trying to actually bring people in is such a challenge right now. And so I totally agree that we need more accessible parking. I also believe that we need to uh, provide more public restrooms downtown, we don't have enough of that going on. Also, um, I, I think there's uh, spots that are coming open and we need to kind of uh, find ways to generate more locally on enterprise businesses into downtown because when the downtown area is thriving, that's when local business is growing. And despite having Walmart out on the edge of town or Freddy's over here, the heart of a city is its local business. And I believe that, you know, this city, one reason why I loved it so much was it has character, it has personality, and what we need to do is work together. I hope that we can find, despite what we're going through right now, we can find ways to create more group um, activities and really start to revitalize because right now, people are struggling with their businesses and Rob, I'm sure you very well understand, so thank you.
Thanks Kami, you know, that, that question you had about, uh, or the reference you had to public toilets was, restrooms is probably a whole nother question right there that we could get into, maybe even later. Um, Vanessa, you've got the last, uh, you're the last person on this subject, COVID in the city.
After the city of Grants Pass declared a state of emergency from COVID-19, and they acted pretty swiftly with a couple of things that I am very impressed with. The Parklet program for one was so successful that a couple businesses downtown actually petitioned for it to be extended. Um, so that was a great opportunity for those restaurants to remain open in that way. I would have liked to have seen that Parklet program extend outside of the central business district. Um, there's a couple of restaurants that I enjoy frequenting that don't have the same opportunity um, to kinda cut out a parking space and offer that to their customers, so I, I would have liked to have seen that um, extended. It was great that they acted on um, getting small businesses, um, the loans that they needed and acting really quickly on that as well. Um, I think um, to, to kind of um, extend on what Kami had said, I think one of the best ways to invite people downtown is to have welcoming public restrooms. At this time, what we have are um, the porta potties, which are not welcoming for um, especially people with children. Um, so that's a little concerning, I think that what we can do is we can look to what has been successful for other cities and implement um, like a vandal proof, a self-cleaning, you name it. If, you know, if you can think it, it's probably been created, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we can look at what other cities have done that have been successful for them. Um, I think we should utilize our public information officer um, in this realm more frequently for increased outreach um, to stakeholders on like um, counselor Sherif had said, for grant opportunities and making those things um, more public. And um, I think that the city needs to work with stakeholders in the tourism industry um, to reevaluate the transient lodging tax and the downfall from not receiving that this year and maybe even into next year, um, getting them in touch with the Small Business Development Center to help get them relief and even working into the future um, with a strong partnership with that development center to bring in more.
Alright, thanks Vanessa, uh, Josie, back to you.
Yep, so we're gonna transition a little bit and I think we're gonna now limit it to one-minute responses so we can get through some more questions. Um, so we're gonna start with Clint and the question is, how would you recommend the city handle the current affordable housing crisis we find ourselves in?
Perfect, so only one minute?
Yes, one minute now.
Okay, so uh, this is a very, uh, this is a topic that everybody has an opinion on. My personal opinion is um, I'm gonna go back to my stratid- or uh, what I was trying to talk about earlier, I think uh, as a council member, you need to look at these problems in every single direction, every single thing you possibly can, look at it with an open mind, look at it outside the box. I do not think we have an affordable housing problem, we have an affordability housing problem. You have, if builders were not able to sell their houses, they wouldn't build them. You have a wage gap right now, we as a city, we as city councilor should be providing opportunities to bring business to this place, to provide people with a good steady job. If you have a degree, you can find a job, if you don't have a degree, there is only so many jobs that you can go before you actually have to get on the freeway and go outside this town, so finding some kind of. So finding some kind of manufacturing to come into this property, into the city would be key. We have abundance of industrial parks. We have some of that industrial park that is not filled up. I think it is prime for the city to start pushing out and getting more manufacturing style, more steady income jobs that actually we can give these people a job so we can afford houses.
Great. Thank you. And now, Rob, you're up next.
Yeah, I actually agree with much of what Clint said. In fact, I wrote a letter to the courier about that, about needing to have better paying jobs here. But beyond that, as far as housing numbers, many people are into reducing SDCs and taxes and basically dropping them possibly to zero for affordable construction. And I don't agree with that approach. I think that because I think that our SDC funds will will really be hurting because of that. And then that will all fall back on the rest of us. So it becomes kind of almost like welfare building. But I think on the other end of that, I think that we need to incentivize the building of multifamily units. And I think by raising, to a small degree, fees and taxes on single family housing, we can lower at the same time fees and taxes on multifamily housing and create a difference between those two. And that could be the incentive that builders need while we still keep our SDC funds full and workable. So dropping the bottom out on one end is not the answer. We've got to raise fees a little bit to dissuade single family construction just a little and lower fees on the other end to create incentive for builders to do the multifamily units.
That minute goes back, Josie.
Yeah, it is. All right, Kami, you're up next.
Well, this is my pet project. And first of all, I think we need to start thinking outside the box. Affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean multifamily family units. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to rent to have affordable housing. I purchased a small mobile home for a very reasonable price, and my rent is really low. And I'm I'm really one of the few lucky people in this town to snag such a deal. The bottom line is I'm not happy that they're building more three bedroom, two bath houses over on the L Street property. I am not happy that people think that affordable housing means low income housing. There should be homes for people to purchase who have grown up in this city. I personally have been priced out of three of the cities I lived in, including my hometown of Thousand Oaks, California. That priced me out decades ago. And I feel for the people now who are being priced out of their own homes. I like tiny homes. I like ideas of doing, bringing in Habitat for Humanity. Right now, we have such a bad record. We can get the federal government to give us grants and incentivize loans. There's lots of ways to do it. And we don't have to just go through the regular developers. There's a lot of people out there that want to develop and have outside the box kind of ideas. And I say we should address them all and stop burying our heads in the sand like they did a year and a half ago when I talked to them about it. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Vanessa, you're up next.
This is a big question, so I'm going to talk a little bit faster. I personally am appalled that a sitting councillor would admit we don't have a housing issue at this time when sixty percent of our rental population is rent burden and thirty three percent are severely rent burden, meaning they spend more than sixty percent of their income on housing. So here are some ideas that we can help to alleviate some of this suffering in our community. We need to take the recommendation of the Housing Advisory Committee to retain a housing director for the city. This would create a full time staffer to focus solely on organizing and creating housing solutions. We need to complete a housing needs analysis. We cannot take this crisis seriously until we understand the facts and know exactly what we need. We need to incentivize tradesmen to become contractors. We need to complete a density transfer and allow land zone higher density within the urban growth boundary to be transferred to the core and other developed areas. We need to establish minimum density requirements in highly zoned areas. We need to ensure high density zoned lands such as R four have penalties for construction low density or R one type housing. My continued education with the Land Use Leadership Institute will help me create, work with local stakeholders on this issue continuing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And then last, Rica, you're up.
Here. Yeah, we need to also serve the bottom of the market. The people who just need a cheap place to shower and sleep and keep their stuff and their dogs and they, you know, because and we could do this. We could build a couple of large hostels that might charge five dollars a night for a cot and place to put your stuff, laundry even. You can have services all around them in the same building. The kind of building I'm thinking of is a grocery, old grocery store, except we don't have any old grocery stores left. They've been taken. But something about that style where you could have a huge room full of cots with someone to watch the sleepers in light, very quiet. And people could live and be able to go to work and be able to get into affordable housing if we have any. Thank you.
All right, great. I'll turn it back to you, Chris.
All right. Thanks, Josie. Rob, you're going to be going first on this question. The City of Grants Pass is growing. What is the city's role in helping with that growth? As the need for infrastructure for services increases, how will you ensure that current residents and businesses do not bear the economic brunt of paying for those infrastructure needs?
Well, I think it's great because this dovetails on my last answer. I think clearly the the building, the encouraging of building of multifamily units and possibly lower income units or certainly working wage kind of housing cannot be at the expense of depleting our SDCs where the rest of us will then end up having to have, will be behind the eight ball five years from now. So I think that we need to, again, a slight increase in in fees and taxes on single family construction should be able to cover the discount that we that I would propose and that I would agree to for building multifamily units because we've got to keep, we've got to pay for that infrastructure. The people moving into the area, they come here because the taxes are basically low. I have some other ideas on what we can do as far as trying to get a little more revenue off some of the people that are moving in. And I'll can talk about that later. But I think that the people moving into the area need to pay for the infrastructure, whether that's through increased SDCs on the new houses that they're buying or or possibly a property transfer tax or something like that. And that way we can ensure that the people who are living here now don't get stuck with all those fees on our shoulders for five or 10 years, five or 10 years in the future.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Kami? Well, you're up.
Thank you. My computer just about died, but my friend helped me plug it back in. I have to ask you to repeat the question.
It's a long question. I won't go through all of it, but it's just basically how does the city help manage growth and how the how how to ensure that residents and businesses that are already here don't bear the economic brunt of of paying for new infrastructure?
Bear the brunt of new infrastructure?
Right.
Okay, so isn't that what system development fees are for? For bill?
They are, and the city is.
And I know in terms of the affordable housing issue, there's some talk of possibly reducing those system development fees or eliminating them totally. I don't agree with that. We need maybe to reduce them, possibly to stimulate growth, but to eliminate them totally is unfair to the taxpayers who've already paid, you know. And it's not a grandfathering in sort of process. But right now, I think we need to realize that to the south, we have thousands of people who are going to be looking for homes as a result of, I just drove through talent today, you guys. It was horrible. And what these people have gone through, and we've got people in need of housing. And in terms of managing growth, I say let's welcome these people. Let's find a way to give them homes. Actually, after the Paradise fire, the grocery outlet was bought by an owner, and I hear it's doing much better with the owners that became homeless in Paradise. So I say to, you know, manage our growth. We need to welcome people and but definitely hold them responsible for any new developments.
All right. Thanks, Kami. Vanessa Ojai, you're up.
So we know that our city's population is due to increase pretty severely in the next fifteen, twenty, twenty five, thirty years. And as I stated previously, one of the best ways to avoid housing becoming more expensive with new infrastructure development is doing that land density transfer into already developed core areas of our city. Because when you build out, when you sprawl housing infrastructure, it becomes more expensive to hook up the water, the sewer, and the necessary services for those communities. So a really simple action by the council would be to complete that density transfer into already developed areas. And as Kelly Westles, Director of U Can and a member of the Housing Advisory Committee recently stated, that if we don't get serious about aggressively getting a hold on our housing crisis, this actually threatens the well being of our community going forward, meaning professionals won't choose to root their life here. Doctors will not choose to practice here. Younger generations out of high school will not choose to stay here. So I believe that this is something that we need to aggressively work on.
Thanks, Vanessa. Rica, you're up.
Okay. Thank you. I I believe that we need to make this city more beautiful again. When I, when my parents came here in the eighties, they stopped here and bought a house. They were looking for a place to retire to because they had, they left the Kenai. And this city was with, it just attracted them. It reminded me of Goshaun, Indiana, where my dad came from. And we've lost that kind of beauty. There are many, many properties that are dry. And this city is becoming dangerous for fought with fire. And we need to enforce our nuisance codes, our landscape maintenance codes so that people will maintain their property in a fire, in a safe condition and fix our water rates so they can do so. The combination of non enforcement and high water use rates is killing us. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Rica. And Clint, you're last on this one.
Okay, unmuting. So it's kind of funny because realistically, I, we do have an issue with trying to, any, any council is going to have an issue with managing the growth and keeping the infrastructure in place. I think a lot of aspects of what people are not looking at is the fact that you want to increase density. You want to get more housing in certain areas. You want to do that. You want to bring more people in, but nobody wants to pay for the infrastructure. You have to always look at the curve where your population and density is upside down to the infrastructure infrastructure ability that you have. It is a challenge, but I believe that we have to have some competitive SDCs. We have to make sure that, you know, we don't want to necessarily burden all the building industry with this, but you know, that price has to be trickled down to the to the homeowner. And the people that want to live here, I mean, you, if you're going to add a toilet, you have to pay for it. I mean, there's no money that grows on trees for that. One thing I do want to address, and I'm going to go over a couple of seconds here. But it's it's very funny that I got a call or that you said you were appalled by my statement. You're quoting statistics and facts from a Realtor dot com article that said Grants Pass was one of the most rent burdened cities in all the United States. If you actually read that article and go down in the second paragraph, that author says the reason is because they don't have affordable jobs. So if you look at every problem from every different angle, you can figure out that there's more than one solution than providing people houses. You keep adding people to our city without increasing their infrastructure. Who's going to pay for it? Right now, we need to do an analysis on how much services that we actually give and hand out versus how much economic drivers we have to support that. I guarantee we're upside down right now. Sorry to pontificate, but thank you for your time.
All right, Clint. Back to you, Josie.
All right. So we're going to start with Kami on this question. Where do you see the city in five years? What would be the biggest improvement you think will happen to our community in five years?
You just made me think about five year plans. That's one of my favorite things. I, in five years, hope to see a lot of improvement, as Clint said, on our job market because I do work still. And because of certain issues, I can only work part time. And so I end up in a lot of those low paying jobs. There are plenty of low paying jobs in this town. But we need to attract new kind of industry. And honestly, I don't see the kind of industry that we see in Silicon Valley coming here. We need to attract industry that's a good fit for our area. And I know that when the lumber industry left, there was a terrible hit to the the economy here. So I feel like in five years, we need to grow our industry. I hope to see us bring in much bigger businesses and really have some homes for people to move into because honestly, right now, like he said, without jobs, we can't have homes, but without homes, we can't have employees move here. Our own Lauren Bishop with the Daily Courier had to face that dilemma. So anyways.
Great. Thank you. And Vanessa, you're next.
In five years, that's so hard to say because realistically, we don't even know what's going to happen next week. This year has been quite the shakeup. So ideally, in five years, I would love to see two things. I would love to see permanent secured funding for our public safety services. I don't believe it is adequate to have such critical services on an unstable foundation every three to five years. And I would like to see some serious gains on our housing crisis. The best way to bring jobs to a community is to house your community. If, you know, employers looking to move somewhere and bring industry to a community, they are not going to move somewhere where there are sixteen hundred unhoused folks in our most recent point of of count. And I think that that's the best way. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. And now, Rica, you're next.
She may have signed off, Josie.
All right. Left and maybe she's back. Can you hear us?
Oh, yes. Good. Thank you. Can you repeat the question?
Yes. See, the question was, where do you see the city in five years? What would be the biggest improvement you think will happen to our community in those five years?
In five years, we ought to have a new water plant operating. And if we reform our water rates so we can actually pay for it without going broke, this city will be clean and green and beautiful. Especially if we actually enforce our landscape nuisance code, which our police auditor said, when it comes to codes, enforcement, you know, a code without, that is not enforced is not law. And it enforcement by complaint is not enforcement. And we need to actually enforce those codes so people will cut their grass and water. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And now we'll move to Clint. You're up.
How I see Grants Pass in the next five years or in five years, I'd like to see a lot, a lot more prospered growth. I'd like to see us hopefully get some, some more affordable jobs, more stable jobs, not affordable jobs, basically more stable jobs for people. I, I believe that, you know, we do have, there's resources outside our city, and I'd like to keep people from getting on the freeway to actually go for work. I'd like to see a balance of, and a little bit of expansion in our downtown area. I'd like to see us promote that. I'd like to see us do something with that Civic Plaza Center down there. I know Beth Brothers has it, and they've got a football center in there, but I think that that place is prime for some redevelopment. That is the heart of our city. And I'd like to see something happen with that. And, you know, five years is a good window for that. So and then I would also like to see in five years, I'd like to see us deal with some of the fire issues that we have. I'd like to see our state as a whole, our nation as a whole, get back to actually managing these forests and maybe pump up our logging industry again. As Kami mentioned, you know, I was here in the eighties when the spotted owl came in and killed our economy for lumber. Everybody back then had a decent job. They could afford everything. I think after the lumber industry died, we had a large separation of, of economic, you know, people that could make money went one way and people that couldn't make money went the other way. So I think we need to get back to a happy medium.
Great. Thank you. And Rob, you're next.
So in the next five years, I think we'd be smart to look at the trends that are, have already been set. One reason that our, our income and our, the, the jobs that have been actually doing better around here have a lot to do with senior care, whether that's at the hospitals, different medical services, things like that. And that's going to continue to grow as more and more retirement age people move here. So for our constituency or the, the public to, to get better training so they can take advantage of some of those little bit higher paying jobs that the medical establishment is offering would be really smart. I also think that we've got to somehow attract some traded sector jobs so we can bring money in from out of the area. Now, whether that means manufacturing by helping Spalding Industrial Park get better. But we already have, I mean, industrial hemp could already be, should be a major traded sector job here. And our, our business, our business advocate, Susan Seerider, well, the first thing I'll say I'll do, if I'm elected, the first thing I'll do is I'll reach out to people in the, in the local hemp market and see what kind of help could they get from our local government that would help them to bring more money in from outside the area. This is a, this is an area that is supposed to grow five times, over twenty-five billion dollars in the next five years or so. We need to capture that because we have the climate to grow it. To not do that would be as foolish as being against gold in Sacramento in eighteen forty-nine. I mean, that would have been a really foolish thing. And that, you know, so we need to really look at that as a, as a really good possibility. We need to look at the medical jobs that serve retired people and hopefully more manufacturing as well. But that also could be in the hemp industry. There can be manufacturing.
Great. Thank you.
Where are, what are we going to do? We're, we're done to, it's, we've been at this for over an hour and a half. Is there an appetite for another question? Do we want to just cut it off at this stage?
Maybe do closing comments.
Anybody else? Forgot about closing comments. I do want to point out that there
Can we do any responses?
What's that, Kami?
Like responses to something somebody else said?
You have, you have, you have closing comments. I do want to point out before we go to closing that for any of our viewers who are not totally clear on what's going on with city council elections, there are some other candidates for council positions, but they're not, they don't have opponents. So those people are Valerie Lovelace and DJ Fager, who are both already on the council and are running for reelection. They're running unopposed. And Brian Delagrange is also running for evidently what's going to be an open seat. Tyler Flaming isn't re-running again. So these candidates that we've had tonight are the, the, the open positions that have, that are contested. So Clint and Rob in for one position and Kami and Vanessa and Rika for the other one. All right, Josie, do we want to do closing now?
I think so. So we'll be done within two hours.
Yeah, I got to go back to work. I think, I think Vanessa would be first, but by my count, is that what you're seeing too?
Yes.
So you want to, we want to tell them the order so that they know? I think it's going to be Vanessa, Rika, Clint, Rob, and Kami, right? Okay. Vanessa, how long is it going to be? Two minutes for closing? Two minutes. You're up, Vanessa.
Thank you. Real quick, I just want to take a moment to address an earlier point from Councilor Scherf that one of my data points was from Realtor.com. But I would like to point to a community discussion to address rent burdened in our community dated December thirtieth of twenty nineteen, which the United States Census Bureau information indicates that sixty-two point six percent of Grants Pass households are rent burdened. With that aside, I, my three main platforms that I would like to address is the housing crisis that the city of Grants Pass is facing, ensuring that our budget is spent on a priority needs basis, and opening transparency in City Hall to ensure that all can be involved. It's quite simple. I chose to run for city council because I love this city. I have chosen to build my life here. The details of my proposals make my intentions clear that I will work tirelessly, tirelessly for the residents and for future generations. I am a career public servant, so my only agenda with this seat is to create a better community for everybody. Both the Southern Oregon Central, or, excuse me, both the Southern Oregon Central Labor Chapter and the Grants Pass Professionals Fire, Professional Firefighters Union has endorsed my candidacy. I humbly ask for the ability to fight for you by receiving your vote on November third. Thank you for taking the time tonight to listen and get involved. You can follow my campaign at VanessaOgerGP. That's V A N E S S A O G I E R G P. And please vote for Vanessa Oger for Grants Pass City Council. Thank you.
All right, Rika, you're next. Well, Rika's not around at the moment.
You know, we must have lost her again.
Well, it would be Clint is after Rika. Clint, I think you're up.
Okay. And we got two minutes?
Two minutes.
Okay. Um, so I have been serving on the council so far. I believe, I, I have been able to participate, educate myself, participate in a positive manner. I believe that I've made decisions that have been better, that have made the city better. And in the end, there are a lot of issues going forward. Some things that I definitely have always been in favor of and been trying to push and will continue to push is economic growth, trying to get some more and better paying jobs in our city for our patrons. I believe that we are on the precipice, that we can definitely take some of this in-house and start our own economic development department. And there is an abundance of, as Rob was saying, there's an abundance of agriculture that's available in this area. I think that is a great resource for us to try to capitalize on. If you follow the seed to table process, majority of the hemp and marijuana is grown in our backyard, but is exported elsewhere for consumption, processing, consumption, and distribution. So if we could capitalize on that industry and try to get a little regulation and in the form of a tax or the form of some kind of stipend, so we can actually get some of the benefit for them growing it in our backyard, but not actually selling it in our backyard, that would be, that would be prime. With that, I, I leave it to the rest of you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Clint. Rob, you're up.
Thank you. At this point, I have to say that I'm proud to say that I have helped create at least a dozen jobs every year with my business downtown. And I'm proud to say that I'm a small business owner. Small business owners are still, believe it or not, the backbone of America. Small businesses create more jobs than any other, other type of business. And I feel that I can help represent small and medium-sized business owners. I feel I can help represent the downtown because we have virtually none of that on the council at all, nothing. So it's lacking and I, and I can fill that void. In addition, one thing I want to touch on, you know, people have touched on the, the water rates, but one thing that they haven't touched on is all the extra fees that are on our, on our current water bill. I mean, our property taxes cannot legally be increased without a vote of the people. The extra fees the city's been adding to our water bills are essentially a slick trick to circumvent the law. And I do not appreciate, or I do not appreciate, and I don't support that approach. I mean, anytime that we have had a, when there's been a really bad idea and we've had a chance to vote on it, the people have resoundingly voted no, whether that was the sales tax in fifteen, it went down almost eighty-twenty, whether that was the fires, fire district last year went down eighty-four, sixteen. We need to be able to vote on any of these quote-unquote taxes and not let them be disguised as fees. And once again, I will, I will be an advocate for that because I fully feel that that actually is part of the meaning of transparency. So I will help represent small business. I am a small business owner. I have kids and grandkids who live here, so I'm looking at future generations. I'm very fortunate that my kids have been able to afford houses. I'd like my grandkids to be able to say the same thing. And whoever is elected, I, I feel that from Ward Four, I feel there's some good candidates there. I especially appreciate Kami and especially Vanessa. I know that Vanessa seems to be extremely well-versed, and I really appreciate her thoroughness. And I think that she may have won my vote tonight, but I know that Kami is going to be an asset for sure in the future and should be on committees or commissions at a minimum. And I really appreciate them both running and creating a, an interesting race in Ward Four.
Thanks, Rob. Rika, are you brown? I mean, are you back?
Yes, I am finally back. Charter come out on me.
Okay, Kami is going to be bad cleanup here, so I think you're going to go. This is our, this is our closing, this is your closing argument. You've got two minutes.
I want to be on city council because I see a lot that needs fixing with this city that I've seen over the last fifteen years. And of course, the major thing is to fix our water rates. And I've watched a lot of meetings and learned a lot about this government and how it works. And I want to learn more. And the only way to do that is to become a city councillor. And I retired from my gardening job about a month ago, partly so I could run for this office because I know that it's not easy to be a city councillor while you're working full-time. And I was able to do so because I got my husband's social security. I know a lot about being low-income for sure. I've got eight people living in my house because the rents are too high and there's no place to rent anyway. But I like living with my family. It's, it's actually been a great experience having all my, my children and grandchildren around me and their husbands. And I think this city can be a lot nicer than it is now, like it was back in the eighties. We didn't have all good jobs then. Yeah, we had logging out there. But we didn't have, you know, a great income. We just looked good. If you want industry, you have to look industrious. And a town that is not maintained does not look industrious. Thank you.
Okay, Rika. And Kami, you're last.
Well, it's a little hard to follow Rob after he decided to endorse my co-candidate before I even got a chance to speak, but thank you, Rob. I appreciate your opinion. However, just being armed with statistics and lots of information doesn't make you the best candidate. What makes me the, the best candidate is my years of experience working in the legal field, working on property issues. The fact that I've lived in seven different regions of this country, I've found solutions in so many places that I can bring to Grants Pass. Grants Pass City Council is made up of people who have lived here a long time, and I do appreciate that. But I feel like I will bring a really fresh breath. I appreciate how well organized and prepared Vanessa is. I am a little bit more of a free floater, but that doesn't mean I don't know how to do my work and prepare in advance. That's one thing I always was good at, was studying hard, presenting well, and getting straight A's in college. So I think that I applied to my daily life, to my work running a law office, to my work as a paralegal, to my work as a small business owner, to my work as a teacher. I have the most experience, the best education, and a broad-based approach that I can bring to the city council that I say, I hate to say, nobody else has that ability to bring that much information to the council from their life experience. So I appreciate your, your voting for Vanessa, Rob. I don't think it was appropriate to say it in this forum, but you know, we all have our own ways. Anyways, I hope to work with all of you in the future. And I think this was a most interesting discussion, and I'm kind of glad that it's over.
Thank you, Kami. Back to you, Josie.
All right. Well, that is the conclusion of the forum. A big thank you to all the candidates for joining us and thank you to Chris for being moderator with me. And this will be recorded, so please share it wherever you can. And thank you to everyone watching. And that's it. Have a wonderful evening.
All right. Good night, guys.
Good night.